Welcome candidates and hello to our citizen viewers to the League of Women Voters of Gross Point Forum for the Gross Point City Council. This virtual forum is being recorded and will be posted to the League's website, Facebook page, and YouTube channel on Wednesday, September 27. My name is Laurie Reed, Vice President of Voter Services. This forum is for the general election on Tuesday, November 7, 2023. The League has gathered questions from the community via email over the last few weeks. This format will not allow us to submit all of the questions to the candidates. We encourage citizens to follow up with the individual candidates with their questions and concerns. Questions have been sorted for relevancy, redundancy, and slanderous content. The League is providing this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed by the candidates are neither endorsed nor opposed by the League. The League does not certify any candidate responses to questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at this forum. Before I introduce the moderator for this forum, I would like to remind the community that the League is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We offer candidate forums and other voter education programs as a service to the community. Please visit our website, lvwgrosspoint.org if you are inclined to support our mission of empowering voters and defending democracy. Now, I would like to introduce Joan Richardson, League member and Director of Programming, who will serve as our moderator tonight.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this candidate's forum. We are delighted to have you join us this evening. The League of Women Voters is a national organization whose mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League neither endorses nor opposes candidates or political parties. We welcome everyone, men and women, 16 years and older, into membership. The League of Women Voters of Gross Point has established the format for tonight's forum. Each candidate was informed in writing about the format before the forum began. I'd like to introduce you to League members who will be serving as question sorters and timer for tonight. First of all, we have timekeeper Julian Phillips. And serving as question sorters for this evening were Jamie Ray Turnbull and Julian Phillips. We have four candidates for city council in Gross Point City. They are competing to run for three, four-year terms in the city. All candidates are present, and they are in alphabetical order Seth Crupp, Christopher Moyer, Donald Partham, and Terrence Thomas. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make an opening statement, not to exceed two minutes. The order was determined by drawing lots just before this event. Following their opening statements, the candidates will be answering in alternating order written questions from the community. Each candidate will be asked the same questions with a one-minute response time allowed for each question. As moderator, I reserve the right to close discussion on any question. At the end of the question period, each candidate will also have the opportunity to make a two-minute closing statement, this time in reverse order of the opening statements. During the opening and closing statements and during the regular response to questions, the timer will hold up a card that says 30 seconds remaining, and then a card indicating stop when the time has expired. I believe we're ready to begin, and we will begin with the candidates' opening statements. As I said, each candidate will have two minutes, and we will begin with Mr. Crupp.
Hello, making sure you can hear me okay. My name is Seth Crupp, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to get in front of the voters and talk a little bit about ourselves and how we see our role as potential city council members. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for stepping up and volunteering to be part of the city council and really serve what I think is a crucial role for citizens in our city and improving our city. Just a little bit about myself, so voters kind of know who I am and why I'm interested in the position. I have lived in Gross Point City for seven years now with my family. I've got three kids who all attend Gross Point City schools. I lived in Gross Point Park before that for several years and originally from Ohio. My wife and I moved up here to work. I work at Henry Ford, and I'm in emergency position. And in that role, I've been working as an emergency physician for about 15 years now. And I'm also the Vice Chair of Operations at Henry Ford in the Emergency Department. So I have experience working with all sorts of people from all walks of life. I have a lot of experience in administrative work and management projects and seeing things through. Outside of that, you know, I think like everyone here, I have a great love for this community. Made many awesome friends here, have loved raising my family here, and I just want to be part of this council to help keep this place, the wonderful, you know, family-oriented and safe place to raise a family, also help improve it and make it more prepared for the future as, you know, pressures come from both financial and infrastructure that are going to challenge us, that we're ready for those, and that we've done proper preparation to make our city thrive in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Partham?
Good evening. My name is Donald Partham Jr. I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters. I think these forums are a very good opportunity for us to present ourselves to the community and for the community to get to know us a little bit better, to see what our views are. I also like to thank the other candidates for taking the time to participate in this event. By way of background, I am a lifelong Gross Point resident, spending the better part of the first 30 years of my life in Gross Point Park. And for the last 31 years, I have lived in the city of Gross Point on Notre Dame. I too have had two children that have gone through the Gross Point school system. One has graduated from Michigan State, and fingers crossed, the other will be graduating this spring. For the past 16 years, I have served as a member on Gross Point City Council and have really enjoyed the opportunity to do so. I believe it's very important that we try to give back to the community and, given the fact that I've enjoyed the better part of 60 years of what Gross Point has to offer, I want to continue to serve the residents of Gross Point and look forward to doing so as we continue to traverse through ongoing economic struggles that we all seem to have encountered.
Thank you, Mr. Partham. We'll move on to Mr. Thomas.
Good evening. Thank you to the Gross Point League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate forum. I'm Terrence Thomas, reelection candidate for Gross Point City Council. I'm a lawyer by training and co-founder of an economic development firm called Activate Detroit. My wife, LaShana, and I have raised five children in this wonderful community, two have already graduated from college and tour college now. And our youngest, like her siblings, is attends mayor. We have a wonderful community that has withstood many challenges and more on the horizon. I believe it is a privilege to serve and congratulate the other candidates for presenting themselves as candidates for city council. I look forward to earning and receiving your vote once again. And I do believe it's not only a privilege, but a great duty and honor to serve on your city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Good evening. My name's Chris Moyer, and I'm so excited to be running for the Gross Point City Council. And I want to thank, as my fellow candidates did, the League of Women Voters for their incredible service to our community and to the democratic traditions that we all hold so dear. I also want to thank all three of the current sitting council members, Mr. Thomas, Dr. Crupp, and Mr. Partham for their service to our community. Being a city council member is a great honor and a great responsibility. I'm not running against any one of them. I'm running because I also want to give back to this community that has given me and my family so much. My wife Sarah is originally a Gross Pointer, and while I am not, I have really taken to this community since we moved here from Denver, Colorado in 2018. Five years later, with two dogs and one brand-new baby girl, I'm so grateful that my wife convinced me that Gross Point was the right place to be. This community is full of warm and welcoming people who care about their neighbors and the vitality of this community. By serving on city council, I hope to give back to the community, ensure that it is a vibrant, dynamic, and safe community for my daughter and all our children to grow up in. I want every person and every family, regardless of their race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, and background, to feel welcome and included in this community. And more importantly, I want them to move here and make Gross Point their home. I don't have all the answers to keep Gross Point heading in the right direction, but I promise to listen. And my one promise to every Gross Pointer is that you can call, text, or email me, and we can build our great city together.
Thank you. I think we're ready to begin with the written questions from the community. I will remind you that these questions do come from the community, although they have been organized into some order that seems to make sense to me, but they are questions coming from the people who will be voting for you. So, running for public office is a choice, not something that any of you have to do. And of course, you could easily have decided to run for a variety of other public offices. So please tell us as specifically as you can why you chose to seek a city council seat. And we're going to begin with Mr. Partham.
Primary reason why I chose dates back the better part of 16 years when we had a lot of vacancies in the village. My daughters were at or soon to be at mayor. I lived in very close proximity, and I wanted to be involved in trying to redevelop and bring the village back to life along with overseeing what was going on in the government as a whole and how it impacted my neighbors and fellow residents. And I think we've done a fairly good job over the last 16 years in trying to protect and enhance the village, the community, and the surrounding neighborhoods.
Thank you. We'll move to Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. Great question. I ran because several neighbors asked me to run four years ago. My firm that I co-founded with a childhood friend of mine is an economic development firm that's focused on building mutual relationships and trust between business and community. And they thought that there was a great opportunity based upon my skill set to help with some of the work that Don and other members have worked on with the creation of Main Street and just creating a sense of ownership and collaboration among neighbors and other stakeholders. So I ran because folks thought that I had a skill set that the city could use, and I've been working really hard to deliver on that promise.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
I'm running because I want this community to be that welcoming place, that great place for my daughter and every family and every person that lives here. My daughter was born four months ago on May 15. There is no greater joy. I think all three of my fellow candidates have experienced this in their life. And while I love my job, I love my parents, I love my wife, holding my baby girl is the best thing in the world. And getting to walk the streets of Gross Point, serving on the Downtown Development Authority Board as the secretary, this village board to help the economic vitality has invigorated me, and I want to continue to give back to this community as a city council member.
Thank you. Mr. Crupp?
I was appointed to council one year ago, and we had a vacancy and had spoken to some folks and put my name in because I thought that, frankly, I wanted to serve, same reasons the other folks are here. But I also believe that, you know, one of the best ways to improve the world is to start in your own backyard. And, you know, one thing that I do and have done since I've lived here is I've been very involved in planting trees wherever I've lived, whatever block I've been on, my own yard. I've been involved in the Urban Forestry Commission, and that's one place that I really have started to get more involved. And I think that, you know, I feel like this is just a representation of all the other work we do. Is it choosing the right projects? They're going to have long-term benefits for the community and not just looking for short-term gains, I think, is one of my skill sets that I've done in my own career and something that I think I can lend to city council.
Thank you. On to the next question. I think we'd like to know what you would regard as the three most significant challenges facing Gross Point and how you would propose to address them. And we're going to begin with Mr. Thomas.
Right. Well, I think all the challenges that we're going to face is going to require input and collaboration among experts, the city manager, council, and our community. I think those three challenges confronting us are, one, infrastructure. How do we pay for that and improve it? In light of the recent floods and as well as the most recent tornado that came through our city. I think it's also what can we do to ensure that our downtown is vibrant and vital and engaged? And then let me say, and the third one to me is a little different, I think. What can we do to encourage and mobilize more of our neighbors to bring their talents and expertise to the first two challenges, but also to help us identify other things that we can be doing to make our community just a little bit better for all of us?
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Well, Mr. Thomas has really hit the nail on the head. Those are the three challenges that we face. It's about activating this community and activating all the talent that exists in it and attracting more talent to come and live here and be our neighbors as well. To do that, we need to make sure that we have the best infrastructure in southeast Michigan. And we, you know, this is a regional challenge. This is not something that Gross Point City can do by itself. It's not something that the five Gross Points can do. My work in regional economic development and state economic development really positions me to help work with leaders in Lansing and in Wayne County and at the federal government to attract the type of dollars that we need to invest. And then my experience and privilege of working on the Downtown Development Authority Board to make sure that this village is such a great place to have a business and to go shopping and to be out, I think positions us well to have this vibrant community that we all hope for.
Thank you. Mr. Crupp?
I think the clearest problem that we need to continue to address, and the city's actually, I think, done an excellent job investing in infrastructure and also seeking funding for sewer separation. You know, I have a line on my wall right next to how tall my kids are as they grow of the flood levels that my basements hit. And I think that we all share that as an uneasiness and not knowing when the power's going to be on, or if you're out of town, you're going to get water in your basement certainly lends a certain level of uncertainty to life that we don't want to deal with. So I'd say that's number one. Maintaining vibrancy of downtown is huge, but I think developing it in the ways that support the other things we need. I think that we need young families to continue to move into our community, which I think we've done pretty well with, but that needs to continue. While we also need to have places for aging residents to remain in our community and vibrant parts of our community.
Thank you. Mr. Partham?
Well, the tough problem with going last is you have to echo the sentiments of everyone else. And I think the underlying theme to all of those is that we have to continue to evaluate how city government works so that we can be able to maintain all of the excellent services that we provide to our residents as well as address some of the issues that we have coming, well, not even coming, that have clearly impacted us, be it the floods, be it the tornado, be it the development or redevelopment of the buildings in the village. And part of that is to make sure that the current projects that we have going on are done on time, hopefully under budget, and come in the way we had them planned and envisioned it the way they'll
Thank you.
be facilitated.
Before we get into some of the, following up on some of the specifics that you just mentioned, I wonder if we could take a short break and have you describe briefly your qualifications related to budgets and policies and your engagement with local government, just to ensure that we're all on an equal footing here. So if you can, please be specific about your public service on committees, commissions, city council, your attendance at city council meetings if you haven't been an incumbent. And we will start with Mr. Moyer.
Great. Thank you so much. My background is both in government and then also in economic development over the past decade. I came out of university working on campaigns and in government. I had the privilege of working in Washington DC and then in Denver, Colorado. I've never worked in Michigan government until moving here five years ago, and I work in a non-governmental organization that supports work. As I mentioned, I'm on the board of the Downtown Development Authority here, and I I also serve on several other community boards, including the Heat and Warm Fund and Global Ties Detroit. Certainly, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert in budgets. That's not my area of expertise. Mine is in communications and policy. But I take a very serious approach to managing finances and trying to ask questions that lead to the right answers.
Thank you. Mr. Crupp?
So I don't have any government experience in my previous career. However, you know, I have been on city council for this past year and have learned a lot. I've developed relationships with the other council members as well as city government and feel like there's been a lot to learn. However, do believe that I have gained a lot of skills in asking the right questions and trying to find out what my neighbors need the city to address for them. As far as personal, professional responsibilities, I am on a number of committees inside the hospital with operations. And I'd say that what I can offer is a little bit of an outside standpoint of, you know, getting projects completed and working with people that may not be through all traditional government activity and experience. But I do feel I'm very good at doing those things and have a lot of experience working with groups to accomplish goals.
Thank you. Mr. Partham?
Okay. As I indicated earlier, I have spent the past 16 years on city council, and during that time have served on a number of different committees, including the entire time on the Gross Point Clinton Township Refuge Authority, where I currently serve as the Vice President and Secretary. I have also, prior to becoming a lawyer, was in sales and marketing with General Motors where I had to deal with, maintain, and stay within my sales and marketing budgets. And then for the last 31 years, I've been a practicing attorney. And if anybody's an attorney, you know that you have specific budgets for everything that you do, and you cannot exceed those unless you don't want to get paid. I have also, well, thank you, Miss Timekeeper.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Great. So I've served on the Gross Point City Council for the last four years and have gained a lot of experience understanding how to read our budgets and manage that. I've also served on the Gross Point City Pension Committee. And prior to all that public service, I served on Detroit Wayne Mental Health Agency and was on the board when it transitioned from an agency to an authority and served in various committees that had some, a great deal of operational oversight. And then also at my time at St. John Health System and Ascension Health, I managed a budget, managed a budget of about $30 million with about $15 to $16 direct reports. So I have a pretty good handle. And like Seth, I know how to ask the right questions, I think, and drill down to understand because I'm naturally curious.
Thank you. We're going to talk a little bit about business development in Gross Point. Gross Point is clearly home to a vibrant retail district, but it's one that is always challenged because businesses are moving in and out and expectations change. So I'd like to have you talk about what more the city of Gross Point can do to attract and cultivate small business. And we're going to begin with Mr. Crupp.
I think the city has done a lot to get us where we are today. But some of the moves that are underway, I think, are going to get us further down the road. And one of those is really focusing on housing density and urban density. Bringing some developments that are going to get more people closer to the core of downtown, I think, will certainly help with lots of things as far as foot traffic, but also bringing that energy to downtown, which is just going to continue to bring new businesses and sustain them. And I think that without that continued investment, then it's very hard to get enough momentum to keep businesses down there. And so I think the city has really made some great strides with some of the projects that are underway at St. Clair and the Sunrise Development that is still in the works. So I'm excited to see how those things can continue to build our downtown.
Thank you. Mr. Partham?
Just to piggyback on what Seth said, I totally am in agreement that the new developments that we have, both of which are on St. Clair, are going to help enhance the viability of the village by having more people within walking distance that would come up and be able to frequent the properties in the village. And I think that continuing to market those businesses and the job that Main Street is doing will also enhance that opportunity. And as things get better and progress along and new ideas come to fruition, I think that we can once again build back up to a nice, strong, vibrant village that all of our residents will enjoy.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
To add on, I think I think we got to give also credit to some of our landlords. I mean, for example, it was a big win to get Lululemon into the village. I think we need to do all that we can to continue to support them and their creativity to lure those sort of national retailers that actually fit our community. I think also the hiring of our most more recent city manager, Joe Valentine, who has a great deal of economic development experience coupled with Cindy Wilcock, who leads Main Street. I'm looking forward to that team coming together. And again, this is where I think we need to challenge our neighbors to also get involved. I'm sure there are folks who live within Gross Point City as well as our neighbors who have a lot of retail experience who could also help us. And we need their experience and expertise in Main Street to help us develop our strategies as well as our marketing strategies to recruit more businesses.
Mr. Moyer?
Main Street and the village is a dynamic place as it is right now, but that doesn't mean we can't get better. Attracting signature national brands like Lululemon is a great first step. But we need to couple that But we need to couple that with unique businesses and small businesses that are, you know, founded by gross pointers and people that are active in this community. And so that's what Main Street is really about. We will pepper the the downtown Churchill with these signature national retailers and then have the vibrancy and the unique offerings that attract and retain not just gross pointers, but people throughout Southeast Michigan, throughout the state of Michigan and throughout the Great Lakes region to come here, spend their dollars in Gross Point and make this a great community.
Thank you. Related to that, thinking of ways to attract businesses, what criteria should Gross Point use to determine tax incentives that would attract and keep businesses growing and coming to Gross Point? And we're going to start with Mr. Partham.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Thinking of ways to attract businesses, what criteria should Gross Point use to determine tax incentives that would attract and keep businesses growing and coming to Gross Point?
Interesting. I'm not aware of any tax incentives that we've given to anyone to come into Gross Point that. I don't know if that's in our best interest. Um, the only way that we as a city can generate revenue is from taxes. And by giving somebody a break on paying taxes to come into the city does not necessarily work as a benefit to the city. I think it's more important to try to get them to come in from a marketing standpoint and then encourage residents to frequent and shop in those areas as opposed to paying somebody to come here. I think they should want to come here, not be incentivized to come here.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
I think, you know, there's, there's a number of different programs through Main Street. So I think the big challenge for us is is identifying those folks who are interested in opening um a small business. And there's some different grants that are available um to to assist them. But um but there's no direct incentive that Gross Point itself can actually often provide. We're not a larger city that where we, as I think to as Don mentioned, uh reducing property taxes that are already paid by um landlords, um the owners of the property. There's I cannot think of any um direct incentive other than assisting them with some of their development as well as marketing and other um enhancements that we can that we can do through Main Street. But certainly, I think um our council has demonstrated open minded to all all things if there's uh if there's another way.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer.
Yeah, fundamentally, I agree with Mr. Partham and Mr. Thomas, and I'll maybe take the middle ground on this a little bit. It's there's, you know, we need to be open, as Mr. Thomas said, to the right idea, the right opportunity and uh that may never present itself because we're doing other intrinsic things to attract those businesses. The 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 people that live here, the driveability, the infrastructure that allows people to live, work, play, shop and visit in downtown Gross Point on on the vill- you know, in the village. That will be the main attraction. Uh, tax incentives are, should always be the icing on the cake in terms of economic development and only used in the most rare of circumstance. It's the community development that matters first.
Thank you. Mr. Krupp.
Yeah, I I would just tend to agree with everyone else that I I don't think tax incentives are the way to draw any businesses into our community. Certainly, it would be um somewhat attractive, but I think that there's so many other things that we need to focus on to make these businesses want to be here and want to stay here. Um, it's an important source of income for our city that I I don't think we can necessarily afford to give up either. Um, so I I would really say that that's not something that we would focus on uh as a strategy. I think though, you know, if the right project that would be something very rare but very big and and impactful uh that would serve a purpose that would benefit many of our community stakeholders, certainly, you know, I wouldn't say never. Um, but as far as, you know, small businesses coming into our community, we need to make it uh hospitable and profitable for them um through other means other than tax incentives.
Thank you. The question of short-term rentals such as Airbnbs is surfacing in many communities, including a community close to yours. I'd like to know what your position is on whether Gross Point should allow such short-term rentals. And if so, what kind of restrictions should be made for them? We're going to start with Mr. Thomas.
I think we've already addressed this um as as a city council, but I I don't support short-term rentals for our community. Um, for one reason, um and that's you you create, you you restrict supply. And our community uh will thrive if we create opportunities for more people to move in and live here. I think our biggest, one of our big challenges, and I think that Don mentioned, is what can we do to create opportunities for our more mature citizens, our seniors, um our senior citizens to 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 downsize and and remain in the community that they love, that is walkable. Um, I'm more interested in finding solutions to that than um creating um big challenges and reducing supply um with the creation of short-term rentals.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Moyer.
Hundred percent agreement. The key to Gross Point's long-term success is finding ways to increase the housing supply and increase different opportunities for people throughout the stages of life. Whether they're starting a family, whether they're retiring, whether they uh want to have a single-family unit. Having that density is going to increase our tax base and increase everybody's uh vitality in in Gross Point. Uh, we need to create an ecosystem that attracts people to visit our community, but that doesn't need to happen with short-term rentals. There are other ways that we can do that by being an attractive place to come for the day. Uh, and maybe long term, I'm willing to say that, you know, hotel might be the right solution for this overall community uh as opposed to a short-term rental.
Thank you. Mr. Krupp.
I don't see any upside to having short-term rentals in our community to speak of, other than, you know, the one need we do have is there is not a place for folks to stay nearby who have in-town guests or hosting parties or events. A lot of times, folks are going down to Detroit. Um, I think short-term rentals certainly would be um convenient in some situations for families, but I I just don't think that it creates a a neighborhood feeling that um really any of our community members are going to want uh next door to them with different people coming in and out uh on a weekly basis. So, um, you know, a bed and breakfast or something that's uh more of a traditional um situation where the owner resides in the in the unit and it helps preserve uh some of our larger old homes. You know, that sort of thing, I think, certainly has has been discussed before and and something that I think would be uh worth talking about, but as far as short-term rentals, Airbnb, I I would not be supportive of those.
And Mr. Partham.
Uh, I too agree. Um, I believe as Terrence said, we have addressed this issue and as a group feel that short-term rentals is really not what this community is about. As you all are aware, we have approached the hotel issue at least two times in the past. We've gotten fairly far down the road, but for one reason or another, neither one of those opportunities came through. That's not to say that we may not look at that again sometime in the future, and that may be something that we would consider. Um, and like Seth, I totally would be in agreement for possibly considering uh bed and breakfasts in some of the large estate-type homes. But then again, I don't know if that would necessarily fit in with the neighborhood, but I would be willing to keep an open mind as far as that goes.
Uh, since you've touched on the uh the demographics of the community, I think we all recognize that the points generally are an aging community. We have fewer children than we used to and we have more senior citizens than we used to and that applies not just in the city, but throughout the Gross Points. So let's talk a little bit about that. So let's begin by telling me, tell me what you think Gross Point City can do to attract younger families. And let's start with Mr. Moyer.
Well, this is, this isn't just a Gross Point problem. This is a state of Michigan problem right here. Uh, the state of Michigan, just for the first time, has an average age of our residents of forty point three, which means at forty-one, uh now I'm I'm lifting up the average age of our of our state. Uh, but what we do have is an incredible community that is attractive. It's walkable. It's got downtown amenities. It's got easy access to a broader regional economic ecosystem uh that would make it an attractive place for younger families. Whether they grew up in Gross Point, whether they grew up somewhere else in Southeast Michigan, or whether they're moving uh from Boston or Mumbai or any other place in the world, let's put up that welcome sign to Gross Point. Come move your family here. And that's the very center of what my campaign is about, being a welcome place for everyone to be in.
Thank you. Mr. Krupp.
I think selling that unique nature of our town is key. And and I say a town, I grew up in a small town in Ohio and of about fourteen thousand people. And, you know, there aren't many places like Gross Point that have a small-town feel where kids can ride their bikes, go where they want about town, see their friends and and shop and go to restaurants all within walking distance. Especially i- in proximity to such a wonderful city. So I think that Gross Point really sells itself. Um, you know, continued investment in our schools, which is out of the purview of this group, but also, you know, anything we can do to support that um I think is very important. And, you know, the last thing I'll say is that, you know, we really need to make sure that there's houses for those folks to move into. So continued investment in housing options and the ability for aging members of our community to move into other attractive options um to keep the housing stock turning over.
Moving to Mr. Partham.
Um, I would agree with both. Uh, I can tell you that the transition on, in my neighborhood is happening quite quickly. There's far more young kids running up and down my street than there has been in years. Um, I think that the city in and of itself sells itself to young people. And once they get here and they see the amenities that we have, particularly during the summer, when they can go up to the park and participate in all the events, we had more people participate in in swim team events this year. We've had more people attend the various um activities, be it the egg Easter egg hunt or the fall harvest or the paint the window in the village. All these things attract people to this community and it's only going to help grow.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
I'll I'll just add on to some of the things that are already shared. Uh, um, but again, it's it's communicating and and marketing, um, I think to a um to a generation of of young people that um Gross Point is welcoming. I think Chris has hit it. I I think it's naive to to not mention that the uh Gross Point hat, there was a perception. Um, um, it's uh that it was not welcoming. You know, we we affectionately refer to ourselves as living in the bubble um often, but actually, um as, um, you know, that bubble's been pierced a little bit. I think in a good way and as more people come and and we have friends over visiting. And, you know, just this morning, you know, my daughter walked four blocks to school. She's in the third grade. I mean, we when people hear those stories, it reminds them of Mayberry and they want to be a part of it. Um, and um I just think it's more, it's more of that communication and sharing those stories.
Thank you. So let's talk about the other end of the age spectrum then. So how well is Gross Point doing in meeting the needs of seniors? And what more do you think the city of Gross Point could do for them? And we'll start with Mr. Krupp.
Well, in in my day job in the emergency department, I see the challenges of aging members of any community uh in in the front row and mobility, access to medical care and basic things like food, groceries are some of the top concerns for many of our aging population. Uh, and as people uh families spread out and families are are not as tightly woven, um, the need for support of those members of our community will become all the more important as time goes on. Um, I know the helm is a is a critical um resource for many of the aging members of our community. And uh they have come to the city to talk about, you know, how we can potentially work together to help uh increase and enhance their services, which I think is something we need to continue to talk with them about. Um, and further, you know, I think the housing stock in in for folks who are just looking to downsize and don't want to leave their community, their church and their friends.
Uh, Mr. Partham.
Um, well, I'll continue with where Seth left off. And it, I I truly feel that it's the housing stock that will get better once the two developments that we have on Saint Clair are completed. Um, I know that it's very difficult as people get older, they want to have one-story living, they want to have walk-in type bathroom, bathtubs. And we don't have that in our community. And hopefully, once these new developments are done, we're going to be able to afford that opportunity to people to stay here and to then be able to be a block away from the village where they can go and walk, where they can go to the bank, they can go to the the clothing store, they can stop off and get a cup of coffee or a donut. And until that happens, we don't have a a real good stock for seniors.
Mr. Thomas.
More and more I think about it, um, I'm still, to be honest, um, at at a loss for what can be done. I mean, I know we can use our bully pulpit to encourage people to financially support the helm, which, you know, full disclosure, I serve on the board of. And and I'm biased, but the helm does does great work and and can do more. Uh, but the challenges that we're confronting are not just a Gross Point City issue. It really is almost is a points regional issue. So what can we do together as a region or just ask the points to develop some some strategies and initiatives to address this? For example, um, between us, is there some other places where we can do some developments that are um that are we attracted to our seniors and just as we have the trolley come up with some with a a creative mechanism so people get up and down Churchill for for all kinds of things to um if they're not living within walking distance. I just really think that uh again, this is an opportunity for the best and brightest in our communities to help us come together.
Thank you.
of a solution.
Mr. Moyer.
I don't want to pretend that there's an easy answer for this. Any complex problem has multiple solutions and multiple challenges. But I have great news. We live, excuse me. At the, excuse me, we live at the epicenter of this.
Let me get some water, Chris.
I am so sorry. Um, I'm so excited about telling this answer. I've lost my voice, but we live at the epicenter of a regional ecosystem of innovation. Detroit has always been innovators when it comes to mobility. And Gross Point should raise our hands and say, we want to be the test case for future mobility solutions, particular when it comes to autonomous vehicles. This can be a s- a great solution and a great attractor for people to want to live here throughout their golden years. They don't have to worry about necessarily driving everywhere, but they can get to everything that they want to within the city of Gross Point and in within the broader ecosystem if we say that we're going to be a hub of mobility innovation here in Gross Point.
Thank you. Uh, related to all of this, um, Gross Point City, of course, is just one of several municipalities in the points. And of course, we also have a school district that embraces all of the points, plus some some part of Harper Woods. What kind of relationship do you think the city should have with the other Gross Points and the school district and Harper Woods? And what specifically would you propose to do to develop that kind of collaboration? And we're going to start with Mr. Partham.
Well, I can say that we work very well together. I know that there have been a number of instances where our neighbors to the right and to the left, be it the park and the farms, we've gotten together to go out to bid for certain projects so we can get better. To bid for certain projects so we can get better deals. We have shared in the past of a chief of police with Gross Point Park. We shared dispatch with Gross Point Park, we. Work with the school board as far as maintaining and operating uh the neighborhood club fields. And. We have very good communication and we need to enhance that communication. And continue to reach out to our neighbors and. They too will do the same to us, I think I think that we get along quite well.
Thank you, uh Mr. Thomas.
Add on to to uh to to Don's, I think the other neighbor that we don't talk too much about, but is vital to us is the city of Detroit. And and we've done a lot of work over the last four years in collaboration with the city as we talk about a design. A- as well as shared costs and going after some federal dollars to improve um Mac Avenue. Uh from 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 altar to 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 Maross, so um. You know, I think it's important for our neighbors to know that. Hey, we're doing a great job of communicating and collaborating with all of our neighbors. Um I think the big challenge for all of us is that one of our neighbors is a big body of water, that's eroding. Um and there's and no one can live out there, so that also reduces the number of folks who can actually shop along our commercial corridors. So I think we've all found that it's in our best interest and and we're seeing it. I think the big opportunity is is us to find are there other areas of shared services that we can do amongst all the points. Um to reduce costs while also improving um sustainability and efficiency.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer.
Collaboration's the name of the game, uh and it does start with Detroit as. As Detroit goes, so goes the entire region and Southeast Michigan, and of course, the of course Gross Point and the five points. Uh so fostering that greater collaboration amongst the five gross points, Harper Woods. The east side of Detroit, the whole region is is really critical. Uh and so that means the ability to work up and down ladder, different ladders of government. Uh working with uh Wayne County Commissioners, Wayne County Executives, state representatives. Our state senators and of course, uh the executive branch in Lansing as well. Uh we have this opportunity as a small community, but as an important community. To better exercise those uh opportunities and points for collaboration. So that our services are at their at their best.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp.
When I think, when I look at the gross points, I think of really a. Medium sized city of fifty thousand people. And it seems like many people ask, well, why do we have all these separate services in all these different places? I think that there's good reason for that in many cases, but I think as budgets continue to tighten over time, we need to continue to find. Areas where mutual aid makes sense, where it makes services. Either as good as we've had them or better. Uh and saves money for our city, so I think dispatch sharing has been very successful. Um I think the mutual aid agreements among the fire departments have been very successful. Uh but I think that those things will continue to evolve over time, that we need to can uh. Keep exploring ways where we can uh spend money more efficiently. Um so I I I think those are probably things we're gonna just keep exploring over the years in the points.
Thank you, so we're almost ready for your closing statements. But I always like to close my interviews with this question. Because I don't ever want to assume that I know all the right questions to ask because I don't. So I'm gonna ask you this, is there one question you wish I had asked and I did not? And if that's the case, I'd like you to ask it and answer it. So let's start with um Mr. Thomas.
Or should ask me the hardest question in the first um. I can't, I'm sure after someone says something, it's something will come to mind. Um I thought that all the questions were were thoughtful. Um. Um so I I I guess I'll have to pass and and take the merit, I can't think of any of those.
Mr. Moyer.
Yeah, I I'm not trying to show up, Mr. Thomas, cuz this is just, this is a brilliant man right here. But I think if there's one question that we all should ask ourselves, and it's if offshoot of that first question, why are we doing this? It's it's what is the purpose of of city council in 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 Gross Point City? And to me, the answer is, we are that representative body. That gets to interface and communicate and be open to communication and listening to all of our fellow citizens. But to serve and help enhance the city manager and the city staff's role. We're not politicians in Lansing or Washington DC, we're we're neighbors. Uh let's let the city manager and city staff be excellent at their job. That's what I see the purpose of city council is in Gross Point and. Why I'm really excited to to interface with my neighbors and and listen to all of their great points to help them uh live their best lives.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp.
What do you think city council? Could do better? For the city, uh the residents of Gross Point City, and and I think that. I would say communication, I think that the city does an excellent job of pushing out. All the information that our citizens need to know about, letting them know about projects and updating them. In multiple ways, um and so at some point, you can only send messages so many ways that people don't hear them. But in in my brief time in city council, I have seen and experienced. Uh just for my own friends and neighbors where it seems like no matter how well something's publicized. People still don't know about it till it's just about to happen and say, oh my gosh, I can't believe this project's happening, why didn't anybody ask us? So I think that that's something that although I think all the right things are being done, uh we need to continue to do better. Um I think that getting community stakeholder buy-in is really important on the grassroots. And the more folks we can talk to and socialize any projects that are coming down the line.
Thank you.
More successful.
Mr. Partham.
Tough question, um I guess it, I'll go back to one of the questions that was posed to city council. God, maybe twelve, ten, twelve years ago, when we were going through budget cuts and all the stuff during what Pete. Dame used to refer to as the Great Recession. And the the comment was, what do you mean you don't get paid, why do you do it? And the plain and simple answer is, I love the city of Gross Point. I wanna see it be vibrant and grow and be the same place. It was when I grew up, when my children grew up, and hopefully, when their children grow up. I want this community to thrive and be the best that it can be. That's it.
Alright, thank you, um so we're gonna move into closing statements, and as I told you at the beginning, we will do this in reverse order. You have two minutes, each of you, for your closing statement, and we'll begin with Mr. Moyer.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum and to my fellow. Uh candidates for office, this has been a real privilege to speak with all of them and all of you to tonight. Um I started my comments this evening by saying, I wanna talk to you, and I mean that, so I'm gonna give everybody my phone number. So that you can share your ideas of what you'd like to see for Gross Point. You can text me, call me, pretty much at any time, now if it's two in the morning, I might not answer, but if there's an emergency, I will. My number's three one three seven four four five seven seven four, and you can find that on my website. Uh Chris Moyer for Gross Point. Um and you can email me at chrisforgrosspoint@gmail.com. I care so deeply about this community that I have been, I've been lucky to move to. Uh in my day job, I worked for Visit Detroit, which helps bring billions of dollars of economic activity to Southeast Michigan. And signature events to our region like the twenty twenty four NFL Draft. We have so much to be proud of as Detroiters and as Gross Pointers. This is the home of American innovation, great music, great culture that continues to influence the world. The Detroit metro area is the largest border region by population in North America. And the second largest border region on the planet. That's a pretty special distinction and indicative of our incredible potential to do great things in the twenty first century. Gross Point can be the home of so many great people and ideas, leading the way for this country and for the world. I wanna help make Gross Point the best place to live and the most dynamic economically mobile region in the world. Thank you so much, and I hope you'll consider voting for me this November seventh.
Thank you, uh Mr. Thomas.
I wanna say um good evening once again, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and also to. Um Don, Chris and Seth for your contributions and and candidnesses. I want your vote, but I actually want a little bit more from each of our neighbors, and that is. You know, step up and serve, there's a lot of different opportunities. Um our community will only thrive and get better with uh with your deliberate thoughtful um input. There um s- six, I mean, six, seven boards and commissions um that serve that serve our city. And we need all of your 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 engagement and expertise, especially um Main Street. We need more and more folks to engage and help us make that corridor um the best it can be. Um I lo- I love this town, I mean, it is that, it is a small town. So we need more of you to to roll up your sleeves and join us um in this effort to make it the most vibrant community. Um known to to all the folks of Southeast Michigan. Um Chris and others have expressed a great deal of sentiment about what makes this place special. And and for me, what makes this place um special more than anything else is. Um from twenty five to to eight, that's the age of my kids. They've all had the experience of walking to mayor and back, walking to Pearson back, walking to South and back. Riding their bikes to every park between the points, some I don't even know about. Uh but that's what makes this 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 neighborhood so special. And we and I wanna work to continue to um to make it special, as well as inviting for all who wanna call this place on. And all who wanna spend their dollars here through entertainment or dining, thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Partham.
Well, I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters as well as Seth, Terrence and Chris. Um it's nice to actually have a contested election. Because that means we've got a new person that's interested in doing something in our community. Um I believe that. The historical perspective of where we have been as a city. And the difficulties that we've encountered and overcome is very important. Particularly as we transition to our new city manager. Uh who is an extremely intelligent, very talented and very well qualified individual. Who I think is gonna be just a super enhancement to the community. Um in following up on what Terrence said, I'd like to see more people. Participate, not just in local government, but in all the different committees that we have. And the other opportunities that are available to you, we have a lot of talented people in Gross Point City. That I'd love to be able to take advantage of. And I know that over the years, when we've always had these little citizen committees, whether it's. We evaluate the potential for the new hotel or for the design of. What that hotel should look like, or when we're confronted with budget cuts and and other things. That we're we've looked at and we've had people come in, it amazes me at at the talent that's out there. That's just an absolute untouched resource that I would love to see. Us be able to use more frequently in the future. Uh thank you all and make sure you get out to vote.
Thank you, uh Mr. Krupp.
Well, thank you to the league and uh my fellow candidates for uh stepping up and and being here tonight. And uh was good to hear all of your thoughts and how much you all care about the city. Um and its future, I think that we've touched on a lot of things about the city is economic development, infrastructure, schools, families. Aging population, all the things that I think are top of mind for us, but. When it comes back to it, is that we have a welcoming community and we have a nice. Framework of schools for us to grow families in. But something else that struck me when I moved here uh fifteen years ago now, was just the beauty of our surroundings. Um driving through this place after never never having been here fifteen years ago, when my wife and I were looking at cities all over. Uh in Ohio and Michigan. I looked around and said, wow, who's so lucky to live in a place as beautiful as this with beautiful old homes, mature trees. Along the lake by a city. I think that as much as we need to do all the things we talked about tonight, I think maintaining and and on our master plan, we surveyed our city citizens. And one of the things that really stuck out most that they value most is the character. The character of our surroundings and the and, you know, the tree lined streets, those things cannot be underestimated. And so I, as a member of council, um would like to continue to invest. In keeping city services and keeping our trees maintained, keeping new trees being planted. So this place looks as good as it does now in fifty or a hundred years. And also maintaining our city services, so the little things don't slip as far as maintenance of our roads, maintenance of our curves, maintenance of our public spaces. That things continue to look nice, feel nice um for our citizens. And last, we have aging homes, they're getting older and we've seen other.
Thank you. Sorry to cut you off there, but that does conclude the questions and answers for this evening's forum, thank you gentlemen. It really has been a pleasure to be your moderator this evening. I wanna thank you for your willingness to participate in this evening's forum. And most of all, I wanna thank you for your willingness to run for public office. I don't think we can ever underestimate the value of having high quality individuals, being willing to put themselves out there for such public service. This forum will be available for viewing on the League of Women Voters of Gross Point webpage and Facebook page. Our online voter guide, which covers this race is on vote four one one dot org. And is linked to our website, which is LWV Gross Point dot org. A final reminder that Election Day is Tuesday, November seventh, the polls open at seven AM and they will be open until eight PM. If you need to, you can verify your voting registration status by calling your city clerk. Or by going to vote four one one dot org or to the Secretary of State's website. Thank you all and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.